Good morning, everyone. It is Wednesday, April 17th, 2019, about 9:33 a.m. Welcome to the Planning Land Use and Zoning Committee. My name is Mike O'Brien. I am the vice-chair of this committee, but acting as chair today in the absence of former council member Rob Johnson. On our agenda today, we have three items. We're going to first consider a resolution which we may vote on recognizing the work of the North Del Ridge on the North Del Ridge Action Plan. Second item is a quasi-judicial matter which will be a remand of approval granted last year to a project in Finney Ridge. And finally, we'll hear an ordinance related to monitoring and inspecting vacant buildings and amending our code for that. I've been joined by my colleagues, council members Herbald Gonzalez, and staff today by Noah An. Thank you all for being here. Just a quick reminder to folks that Agenda Item Number Two is a quasi-judicial item, so we will not be taking any public comment on that today. We will have a proceeding when we get to that item, and the appellants and I forget the legal term of the other side, but the appellants and the defendants, I guess, or the applicants maybe, will each have time to present part of their case. But anyone else during public comment will not be allowed to testify. We have four folks signed up for comments, so we'll go ahead and do that. Folks will have up to two minutes to comment. Vet Dynish is first, followed by Alex Zimmerman, then Michael Taylor-Judd, and then Steve Rubstello.
Well, good afternoon. I know it's not Monday afternoon at 2:00. However, I found out when I took the People's Academy for Community Engagement that in order to get free land that was recently enacted statewide from governments that are surplus land, that we worked with the Land Use Committee. Is that correct?
You're talking about surplus land for transportation, like sound transit?
No, for housing, donated to nonprofits with the stipulation that they have to provide housing with that surplus land. Am I correct?
My understanding, I believe you're talking about state legislation that requires sound transit when they dispose of surplus land to do that in a way that supports affordable housing.
Almost. But according to the state law, all municipalities statewide, if there's surplus land, whether it's a half-block long or whatever, that they have the option of donating it to a nonprofit to provide affordable housing.
You're right, and our utilities can do that, too.
Okay, so is this to write subcommittee? Because that's why I'm here. Because I want to set up a meeting, is what I'm saying.
There would be a lot of work for a project to be done before it would come to the subcommittee, at which we would approve it, but it's not a place where we would simply grant land.
No, no, not grant, but I mean, would we start a conversation with this committee? Is this to write subcommittee?
Probably with the executive staff to do that, but we could help connect you with the department if you have land that's identified that you'd like to...
No, but we want to start the conversation because we qualify. My husband, I have a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And we've been working on housing for, you know...
I would suggest working with the Office of Housing would be probably the best place to start.
Okay, so I had incorrect information. Office of Housing. Also, on Agenda Item Number Three about monitoring and inspecting vacant buildings? So the city knows that there's vacant buildings, that they're not being maintained to a certain code? Is that what that is?
Specifically, they need to be boarded off so people don't inhabit them. And we'll get into the discussion when we get to that.
Okay, so just planning the city cannot somehow lead to affordable housing? I'm just saying. That's all I wanted to know.
Yes.
You went to the wrong subcommittee.
Thank you, Vet. Alex.
Yes, thank you, sir. Zihai Laimdori-Furor, a Nazi garbage rats from Animal Farm. My name is Alex Zimmerman. I want to speak about Agenda Number One, about plan what has come from Den Bridge Neighborhood. So guys, for 10 years, I talk about this. Every decision post to be made by local people. These local people post to be control every territory what is belong to them and only come to this place for approving or disapproving, but there's different story. We don't have this. You control everything. It doesn't have sense because we lose everything for last many years. And I talk about this for 10 years, every day, zero reaction. Why? Why council cannot understand very simple point? People who live in this district, in this location, know better what is better for them than you because you by definition are a crook. And I think it belong to what is I call a Nazi social democratic mafia with Gestapo principle. By definition, you are a criminal and all banditos. This exactly. But this is exactly another point, what as I talk for 10 years, 100 times. Without, 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 every director of department post to be report to the people every month, their job is normal. And I talk about this 100 times. Nobody listen to me. No one from this chamber, no one, this crook who this is this chamber listened to. It's very simple business principle. So when we have this, if we have community decision, you know what this mean? We may be more, we'll be happy, maybe 5 percentage, but more happy. Are you freaking idiot, a critina don't understand? It's a simple business principle. It's good for business, good for people, good for city. So right now, I speak to you, Seattle Emerald Degenerate Super Smart freaking idiot, cleanse this dirty chamber from this critina, from this Nazi. Thank you very much.
Michael, you're next.
Good morning. Michael Taylor-Judd, former chair of the North Del Ridge Neighborhood Council and a member of the ACT Committee. You'll be hearing from some of my fellow committee members shortly about the North Del Ridge Action Plan. I'm here to speak in support of the resolution. I can't believe we're here. It's been years trying to get to this point. I'm happy to recognize the work and support we got from the city. We lobbied for quite a long time to do more neighborhood planning in North Del Ridge. We knew light rail was coming. We knew honestly that gentrification was coming. We knew a lot of change was coming, and we wanted to get ahead of that and make sure as a very diverse neighborhood with a lot of low-income people, a lot of immigrants, as well as a lot of multi-generation people who've been in that neighborhood since before even New Core got there, that we wanted to be able to shape what that change would look like. And as my fellow committee members will be presenting to you, with the help of Department of Neighborhoods, DCI, SDOT, and other city departments, we did a yeoman's effort getting all sorts of folks from every aspect of the neighborhood in different languages, in different venues, whatever was necessary to get as many comments and opinions and find out how people live in the neighborhood, how they get around the neighborhood, what their vision is for the neighborhood, what they love, and what we're missing and what we need to bring there. And we're hoping that your resolution and support of this action plan will help us continue that planning as we move forward in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Thanks for you and the community's work. I know that doing that type of planning can require a lot of persistence, and I appreciate that and look forward to the presentations today. Stephen.
How green you are not. Let's take a look at the tree ordinance. Remember the tree ordinance? Is that going to happen when the last tree falls, or are we going to do something before that? It's been over a decade since we've had anything that meant anything, and Seattle does proclaim itself to be a green city. So let's get some action. Let's save the heritage trees. Let's save those really big trees that do a very good job of cleaning up the air and provide shade, I might add, in a lot of cases, and actually contribute to an atmosphere that might be a little bit more human than just steel and concrete, which I guess is probably your favorite medium at this point. It's probably not surprising when we look at what happened with MHA because we have, we're going to raise the costs because we have plenty of housing in the city. The trouble is, we have a shortage of affordable housing. In five to 20-plus years, much of this housing will become more affordable. And the ghettoizing is, I find, a particularly egregious part of this because we're not going to really require the housing to be in the neighborhood where you're raising the affordable housing. And the affordable housing right now is the most likely to go down because it's where you can make the most money. And we all know that even though the city is overzoned and we wouldn't have to raise the zoning to accept a lot more people, this is done to increase the margins of the developers because they need the money. And we should take a look at the zoning code and actually enforce it. We're having too much of this GWIZ zoning, zoning that happens because somebody has a beautiful idea.
Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment on either Agenda Items One or Three today? Yeah, come on forward. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you, councilman. Speaking of this one. Hi, my name is Rudy Pantoya, and I live in Crown Hill. And just met with the mayor upstairs about a sobering unit for North Seattle. I'd like to pass this on to you in regards to our issues of concern regarding increased street crime, Ballard, Fremont, Greenwood, you understand, I don't need to go any farther. And one of the issues we have is we find people laying down on the sidewalk with no place to go. And a sobering unit with the heroin injection sites on hold right now would fill a gap necessary north of the Ship Canal that we currently don't have, other than the bus stops, the sidewalks, the storefronts and stuff like that. So my time is up. Best behavior today, and I'm out of here.
Thanks, Rudy.
Back to Ballard. Thank you.
Good to see you. All right, anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment and invite presenters for Agenda Item Number One forward. And Noah, do you mind reading Agenda Item One into the record?
Agenda Item One, Resolution 31880. A resolution recognizing the efforts of the North Del Ridge community to prepare an action plan for their community, identifying a work program to implement the North Del Ridge Action Plan, and identifying proposed amendments to the Del Ridge Neighborhood Plan in the comprehensive plan for consideration in 2020.
Great. Before we get into introductions, I just want to acknowledge my colleague, Council Member Herbald, who has been an advocate for this project, given before council, even though it's been a long process at the city's end. And so, if it's okay, Council Member Herbald, if you want to just lead on this discussion for this, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. And first, I'd like to thank you for agreeing to hear this in this committee that we weren't sure whether or not we needed to schedule or not, given all of the considerations around the chairing of the committee. So I appreciate that this rose to a high enough priority for you to make time. And as we heard in public comment, this has been a long time coming. The working of the action plan and pulling it together took time, but it also has taken time to bring this to council as well. I want to acknowledge Michael Taylor-Judd for his vision in making sure that the council actually recognize the plan by resolution, which there was some uncertainty whether or not we needed to do that, and he and other members in the community felt strongly that that was an important step that we should take. The last time the Del Ridge Neighborhood Plan was updated was in 1999. And as we are recognizing this plan, I know OPCD has identified Del Ridge as a priority neighborhood for planning in the near future because of the impending decisions around light rail. As mentioned, the action plan was released last August. One of the things I did after the action plan was released was to, in the budget process, get some funds in the Parks Department earmarked to address the community planning process, to examine enhancements to trail access points on Southwest Brandon. That is going to be one of the projects I think we'll talk about today. Parks has said that the engagement process will begin the second quarter of the year. So we've got that going. But I think another really important point of the action plan and the adoption or the recognition of it by resolution is to get us all on the same page about what the next steps are. So that's it. I thank folks from OPCD and the community for working on this and love to hear more.
Should we start with a round of introductions?
Lish Woodson, Council Central Staff.
David Goldberg, Office of Planning and Community Development.
Linda Bu, Vietnamese Cultural Center.
David Bestock, Del Ridge Neighborhoods Development Association.
Pari Heinz, Del Ridge neighbor.
Great. And Lish, did you want to give us a quick little overview?
Just very briefly, this resolution recognizes the North Del Ridge Action Plan. It highlights key strategies from the action plan for implementation over the next one to three years and adds an update to the Del Ridge Neighborhood Plan goals and policies for consideration in the comprehensive plan update next year. And David Goldberg is here, and maybe he can talk a little bit about the planning effort.
Great. You comfortable doing that, David?
Okay. So really happy to give an overview about the plan. We have community members who can speak to their community, and this really is a process and a plan that speaks to community interests and community priorities. As you know, neighborhood plans provide a foundation, not just for specific capital projects and programs, but to give context to the efforts that the city makes in a given neighborhood over a period of years. And we find that these community documents really help to shape projects. I first want to thank the people who really stuck with us through the process and helped lead the community engagement at the table. We have Pari, and David, and Linda. Each of them was present through the entire process and devoted a tremendous amount of time to this. In addition, over the course of the planning, there was Nicholas Ames, who came from Youngstown Flat, a new apartment complex that was there. Willard Brown, an amazing contribution to the community, part of DNDA and a real force in the community. Renette Eiting, who's been, together with Del Ridge Grocery Crop, has been working to push access to affordable, healthy food in the neighborhood. Anne Jewitt, a resident in the area. Kim Justice, a Pigeon Point resident. Amanda Kirk from Highland Park Neighborhood. And Amanda Leonard, also with Michael, a North Del Ridge Community Council member. Dorsal Plant. And then Carol Williams from the Nature Consortium also helped us for a period of time. And those people really helped provide a community voice at every step of the way at the table. Nothing really happened without them there. We also want to thank the community liaisons that helped us to engage, I think, for the first time for this community, deeply into historically underrepresented communities, and that was Paulina Lopez and Hassan Wadara Fong Nguyen, Rich Summers, who engaged the U.S., Okontiok, who engaged the Cambodian community, and Tuat Dao, who engaged the Viennese community, along with Linda's help. So why did we plan? We knew that this neighborhood was experiencing growth and change. We also knew that there was capital projects coming to this neighborhood, so it was important for us to get ahead of that. And the big one coming to this neighborhood is going to be the H-line expansion and also Sound Transit III, which is underway. That, together with a community desire that Michael spoke to, really urged the department to plan for this area. Even though it was one that has not seen a ton of growth, it's an area that we know will experience change. So through the engagement, we engaged over 400 people in a variety of different forms and came up with six priority areas that are spoken to in the plan. This includes supporting diverse and engaged communities, developing dynamic neighborhood destinations, improving access to affordable, healthy food, creating active transportation choices, nurturing a healthy Longfellow Creek watershed, and leveraging parks and cultural facilities to support the healthy community. We did the project with a lens of health inequity because this community's assets are largely around the open space and the health and cultural resources, and those serve as an asset-based approach that will help improve health outcomes for this community. This community, in the broader sense, does not fare as well as some of the richer communities in the area and suffers from some health inequities. So the plan is organized to address each of these topic areas. They're largely efforts that would be undertaken in partnership with the community. There's a number of them that would provide direction to community investments such as Rapid Ride H. There are things that will be done through grants and so forth and council support in the coming years. It really focuses on bringing the community together, working from its assets, the community and cultural elements, the open space elements, to knit the community together. I think a couple of things that are worth noting is that Del Ridge is a very spread-out community. There's really no one place that people consider downtown or where you happen upon one another. And for a long period of time, there's been a desire to use, to work along Del Ridge Way to provide those opportunities. And those opportunities will occur around Andover, where we're likely to see the future, or Genesee, where we're likely to see the future rail station around Youngstown, around the Brandon node, where the opportunity to connect with Camp Long and then parks there, and then down where the Home Depot is, where the Vietnamese Cultural Center is currently located. So these are the kind of the shining points of the neighborhood that we hope to enhance over time. And that's enough of me talking. I don't know if, I think, I want to toss it to you guys. I know I haven't prepared you for anything, but I just wanted to...
Speak from the heart is what I want to say. If you don't mind, I'll start first. This is a very interesting process to be a part of, especially for myself and our community in the southwest area. A lot of our community members are circulate around what they know, and usually generally is about around their churches or their temples. And for us to be able to provide a cultural center where we could bring in things of our ancestors and to provide education to our community members, and also provide, everybody loves a dragon dance, lion dance, some fireworks every once in a while if you get a permit. But it's a good place for gathering. And so over time, our family who's been in the area for 40-plus years, kind of adds to my age here, but allows us to really reach out because we've always, like everybody in our community, we're worried about the health of our family, our wellness, our happiness. But then the second part is like, how do you fit into community? So this is where now we're getting to the part of we're fitting into our community. And so being able to be part of this process, meet my new neighbors and get to know David and with the city, I found the process to be very eye-opening. It opened up other avenues that our organization can engage into the community. So what I look forward for this action plan is to see the development. As we've seen over time, changes from the Home Depot, which was formerly a K-Mart, formerly we had a food giant. We all loved a food giant. And so I look forward to having a food co-op, even though we're surrounded by so many options like the Trader Joe's and stuff, but we get to have something that's ours. So during the progress of this development plan, we want to see some of those things. I actually live at 35th. I was a baby, came onto Del Ridge, and then we lived around the areas. I went to San Oslo. So I've been around, so I've seen it, but I've never been in the work process of seeing how development, how this, I mean, '99, that's when I graduated from UW. So I'm very happy to see this. But going forward with our own organization, we also want to grow. So as Council Member Herbald, she attended to one of our activities this past summer. Sorry about your car being blocked in. That was the thing. So we want to make our space safe so people can come out and visit, but we also want to grow and shelter ourselves when it's raining. So we've been very fortunate. Even this past weekend, we had a function, and we were just praying for good weather. And it didn't rain until after it ended, so we were real blessed. But my family has property we'd like to develop in order to support ongoing activities of the cultural center. So for our seniors, for our youth. So we're going through a process, so that's another learning process for us. So we hope to have a business which helps support, you know, people love to eat, so we want a place to come and gather for that. And that will in turn help us support, have an open space for our cultural center as well, too. So that's what we're looking forward to our end, and then continuing our relationships with DNDA and our neighbors. So that's what we're, sorry, it took so long.
That's great. Yeah, I think from, again, David, with the Del Ridge Neighborhoods Development Association, I think from, on a broader level, I just want to honor David and his work leading us through the process and particularly connecting multiple city departments to the group. We had presenters coming into the advisory core team meetings a lot to get to know what Parks and SDOT and various folks were planning or doing in Del Ridge. So I think one thing I'm excited about for the implementation is continued coordination between city departments and community efforts. We partner with a lot of city departments already. We already were doing that. We have more relationships now through this planning process, both with our neighbors and other cultural institutions and organizations, but also with other folks from city departments. So sort of to speak to, our organization's priorities align a lot with this plan. Our mission is integrating art, nature, and neighborhood to build and sustain a dynamic Del Ridge. And most of these sort of action item categories are things that we are working in. So we own seven affordable housing properties through Del Ridge, the Youngstown Cultural Arts Center. We've done a bunch of work on the Longfellow Creek watershed. There's some coordination efforts going on, on a watershed level now, that I haven't, I hadn't noticed before, or maybe they're ramping up in terms of the coordinated efforts, and that's really great. I'm excited to see more support for public events. We throw our Arts and Nature Festival each summer, and it's a too-well-kept secret because it's an awesome event that brings together a lot of these elements. We're really excited to work with Sound Transit and with our neighbors. Of course, this is going to put displacement pressure on Del Ridge. We're not sure exactly where yet, but kind of working with community members already to make sure that their needs are heard by Sound Transit, by city departments. Our wetlands project at 23rd and Finley is working with SDOT, SPU, Parks, City Light, and more. And so, again, just really looking forward to sort of the coordinated efforts of city departments with our organization and with other community organizations to get some of this work done. Just want to honor sort of the community engagement of youth, of the various cultural communities. I thought we did a pretty good job, actually, through this process of engaging a diversity of voices and bringing folks to the table. So just want to honor that and excited to kind of continue that engagement through implementation and through grant-making and through funding to, I think, 20 years ago was the plan, the last update. Things have changed a lot. Things are about to change a lot more. So our organization, I think, the advisory core team as a whole, really took on sort of how can we preserve some affordability and engagement by these communities as things are changing around us. So excited to continue working with the city on that.
Nice. I'm Pari Heinz, and I've been in Del Ridge about 18 years. I moved there because I was working at the Del Ridge Neighborhoods Development Association back when we were developing Youngstown Cultural Arts Center and Croft Place Town Homes and the home of the West Seattle Food Bank. So I've seen a lot of change happen in Del Ridge, both, I think, good and bad. I worry a lot about gentrification and some of this development pressure. So as part of this process, I also do want to honor all the work that people are doing, but I'd like to raise the red flag that, you know, when we put it down on the paper, we need to be prepared to follow through. And I think many of those steps are in process, and there are a lot of departments that are working on it. But I really worry that, you know, like a city, the process takes a long time, right? And I see all of these townhomes being developed along Del Ridge Way, which are, they're really pretty, and they're nice, and wealthy people can live there, and it's bringing density to Del Ridge and doing a lot of good things that way. But I worry that we need to find ways soon to make sure that we're preserving affordable housing and building new affordable housing, or we're going to be, you know, it's going to be a strip of tall townhomes. So I think some of that zoning work that is in the plan, I know there's a lot of sort of look at, study the zoning, some like affordable housing pieces and the potential changing of zoning to encourage more mixed-use, neighborhood commercial, higher-density residential. I think those would be a real priority from my point of view, having sort of seen what the development pressure is doing right now. There's a property that's in the neighborhood commercial area on Del Ridge that's just been developed as townhomes with live-work units below, right? Which I don't think is really what people had in mind when they zoned it neighborhood commercial, that it would be townhomes. And they're lovely townhomes, and, I mean, they'll be nice neighbors. But I think that we have a chance to, you know, for the health of the city to use this land that's very close to downtown Seattle to be a more dense and equitable community and where people who work in the lesser-paid professions that are supported and an important part of our city can live in Seattle and live near downtown, so we can house those people. And then also with... And then also within Delridge, you know, I, along through this process, saw all of this research about the health impacts. And, you know, I live there, and I don't want those health impacts. So, you know, finding ways to make the community more walkable and to, you know, address a lot of that inequity. I mean, I try to do that for myself personally, but I know that, you know, neighbors could use a lot of support with that. And then I would also like to, as a third priority, talk about the Delridge Grocery Co-op specifically. And I think whatever can be done to support that effort, I think that'll have a tremendous effect, both on providing healthy food options and also becoming a neighborhood hub for a place where people can gather. There's actually, not too far from that location, there's a tiny coffee shop that just in the last year, like now it's crazy busy, all of a sudden. It used to be that that area was, you know, empty and dead and no one was ever there. And now, you know, you see all these young families and kids, and there's a line for the coffee. So, it's definitely happening, but I want to make sure that we keep a diversity of backgrounds and of income so that Delridge can continue to be the unique place that it is and then become better. So, I support the work that is done. I hope that the vote is in approval of this resolution and that we will continue working and sort of making those actions happen. Thank you.
As we seriously contemplate what our vote will be on this resolution. Colleagues, questions or comments?
Couple of comments if I could. I just want to also uplift the fact, Pari, you made me remember that part of this resolution is also recognizing the comp plan amendments that you guys are proposing that the city consider. And those recommendations are wherein the housing goals and policies are contained. And just want to highlight what some of those are. Community with a range of household types, sizes, and incomes, including seniors and families with children. And encourage the rehabilitation of substandard housing. And a community that preserves and enhances the residential character of single-family neighborhoods within the Delridge community while also providing a range of housing types to fill, fit the diversity of Delridge neighborhoods. So, those are, I think, important goals to uplift, and there will be a comp plan amendment process. And I understand that OPCD will be reviewing the amendments that you propose. I also want to speak to, you know, maybe not all of the things in the work plan itself or the priority actions themselves, but I, one of the items referenced about follow-through and making sure that the words on paper actually become actions. I think one of the first recommendations, if we can get to that right away, if maybe there's already been some work done by David and OPCD, I think that will help us, and that is to have an organizational structure that will steward this plan and help keep my and my colleagues in the executive's feet to the fire on the implementation piece. So, I think that's a really important element that will keep us on track for the other parts.
I really appreciate the thoroughness and thoughtfulness of this plan. And in addition to some of the, or just to highlight some of the things that I mentioned, the commitment to addressing racial equality outcomes throughout the work in there is something that's important. I appreciate the work to clean up Longfellow Creek with, you know, natural storm water, both as a way to improve the neighborhood but also improve water quality and so. And I just acknowledge the challenge that there's a lot of, it's a robust plan, and it'll take serious investment. And, you know, if we compete for scarce resources, that's going to be a challenge, but as Councilmember Herbold said, I think this community is, deserves some significant investment. And obviously, there's, it's exciting to see the H-line coming. Sound Transit will be likely passing through the end of the neighborhood at some point in the near future, relative to near future. But obviously, there's a lot of other work that needs to be done to really support and maintain the kind of richness and the fabric of the neighborhood as it will almost certainly grow, so that it's a positive growth that all the residents there today benefit from as opposed to are displaced. Councilmember Gonzalez?
I have some questions around the housing goals in particular. So, on attachment C, which is, references DG8, and it refers, it's the language that Councilmember Herbold read out loud, which provides that a community that preserves and enhances the residential character of single-family neighborhoods within the Delridge community while providing a range of housing types to fit the diversity of Delridge households. How does that language and that goal square with the recent actions that the city council has taken around approving the mandatory housing affordability program, including in Delridge?
So, I haven't looked at the Delridge zoning map recently, but generally...
What do you mean?
But generally, the MHA proposal did apply a range of different zoning types, from residential small lot, which allows two homes per a single-family lot, to multifamily zones that allow much higher density development. And so, MHA being applied, it'll be slightly more dense than previously, but it still allows for a range of housing types under a range of different zoning types.
And Delridge in the planning area is not an urban village, and consequently, the MHA provisions that apply to commercial multifamily areas do apply there. But Delridge began planning back in the 90s as an area that was identified as a distressed area, one that we were seeking to, in a moderate way, stimulate economic development and community growth rather than in our urban village way. So, the amount of growth tilts a little bit more towards recognizing the existing pattern of single-family development. And within the planning area, which is quite large, it's not actually constrained to areas where it would, like in an urban village designation, where we would look to grow more housing. It encompasses a large number of neighborhoods in the area that self-identify as a community rather than being a place where the city has historically tried to focus more growth. It's an anomaly in our planning. There's two communities that are like this, Georgetown and South, and Delridge are the two communities like this, where we did planning, recognizing that.
Doing planning and recognizing that this is not an urban village.
During stationary planning and as we invest in that area, this plan speaks to beginning a more focused look at how we can advance the community's goals in that area and bring opportunity. For example, the station will serve an area that goes all the way to White Center in multiple communities. So, the definition of community changes, the who has access to the opportunity in that area question comes up, and housing, again, will come up as an issue to address in this area.
Yeah, and I just want to, I want to flag my ongoing interest and concern and not advancing things that will ultimately have the unintended consequence of reducing the housing diversity within various neighborhoods, regardless of whether it's an urban village or not. In, you know, I live very close to Delridge, just up on the hill, and have seen the neighborhood change in a way that is not taking into full account, I think, the diversity of housing that is needed in that space. And that includes the full spectrum, not just affordable housing, but also market-rate housing and the things that are in between to allow people to be able to build a community and a neighborhood that is mixed-income at its core. And so, I just want to make sure that there aren't items in this plan that are going to take us backwards as it relates to promoting those housing diversity options and that are really going to meet the needs, as I hear them, from folks at the table and also from the executive summary, that really the goal is to make sure that there is, you know, an opportunity for people to have housing choice in these types of neighborhoods. And that's just an important thing for me as somebody who really believes in making sure that we are both addressing the displacement and gentrification issues, but also recognizing that there are pressures that are going to continue to come upon neighborhoods like Delridge and others.
And if I just want to respond, that this attachment is mostly the existing comp plan policies related to Delridge. So, and the only thing that the community is recommending adding are the underlying and strikeouts. And so, this language is old language, and it is in the existing comp plan that I read out. And it existed before there was residential small lots. So, I think that's important to recognize. And I also want to reinforce the fact that OPCD has also committed to begin stationary planning with the community in order to specifically identify those areas that we do want intensified density in order to increase access to housing and access to transportation infrastructure. So, I think everybody's on the same page as wanting that stuff to happen, for sure.
Yeah. I acknowledge that it's not, that it's not an addition here. I'm just flagging my ongoing concern as language that you highlighted in your remarks, that I worry about whether that type of language, whether it's an amendment here or not, can put us in a position where we might be at odds with the overarching goals of the stationary planning and other types of housing changes that might be required in that neighborhood down the road when intense attention becomes to be brought into this corridor. That's my concern. So, I'm being asked to vote on it as it is, and it's there. So, I have concerns and want to just express my ongoing concerns that I want us to be really careful that we're not promoting language in these documents that would be at odds with the end goal of, as I understand it, described here today.
And these goals and policies will be back for consideration next year for actual adoption. Right now, they're being sent to the Department for study, and David's here listening to those comments.
Yes, this is why I'm making them.
Well, I'll review this with the MHA team that proposed a number of amendments to similar policies throughout the city to make sure they're consistent with the tone, because I think that's a shared objective throughout the city.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it.
And Councilmember Gonzalez, I appreciate you flagging that, too. You know, the role that single-family neighborhoods play and single-family development, it's a, the name itself is even complex because for decades, multiple families can live on a single-family lot. And so, it's going to be misleading in that ways. And certainly, where we were as a city 20 years ago till today, we've changed a lot. And so, that's still there, and what that means and how we interpret that, I think, is going to be important to think through. So, thank you. Colleagues, any other questions or comments?
I just want to highlight, and I don't think we need to take it up today, but I might be proposing an amendment for full council. One of the items in the work plan relate to DNDAs work to build the wetland and agricultural education park on the Delridge substation. And one of the things that I've been hearing from the community is that we need to be doing more to coordinate efforts with city departments to address both the maintenance and the performance of the bioswells and culverts. So, I'm going to be proposing an amendment at full council that will sort of highlight and call out the need to support that coordination. I just kind of came up with this on the fly.
Great.
And then, if I can just make a quick remark, there is some language in this resolution and the attachments related to stationary planning in the context of the Sound Transit question. I have a direct conflict of interest in Sound Transit issues related to the junction in particular. This one is a little on the gray side for me in terms of whether or not I'm allowed to take action here. And so, I am, I'm very supportive of the resolution, but in the abundance of caution, and probably I'm being way too cautious here, I'm going to abstain on voting on the resolution, just given some of the advice that I've gotten from our ethics person, so.
Okay, we'll see if we have enough votes to carry this without your support.
I'm always so nervous about crossing that line, but I don't want folks from the community or the department to think that I'm not supportive of this plan. I just have a conflict of interest as it relates to decisions about Sound Transit and how it impacts the neighborhood. So, I apologize.
I really appreciate your ongoing transparency about that, and obviously, the folks that are at the elections team are very good at keeping an eye on all this, but you've been very transparent through that and so. And then, Councilmember Herbold, do you think between now and Monday is enough time to work on this? So, great. So, I would, I don't know, would you like to move this?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. I'd like to move Resolution 31880.
I will second. And so, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The opposed, and any abstaining, or recused, I guess.
I guess, yeah.
We'll say you're accusing yourself.
Accusing myself.
And so, thank you all so much for your work on this. I appreciate your persistence. City processes can be long and drawn out, and changing of personnel and bodies, sometimes it seems to drag on, but the dedication and commitment from folks in the neighborhood who have been there for a long time is the only way these things happen. And so, appreciate you being here, and obviously, a lot more work to do in the future in Roper Sleeves, but this will be before the full council on Monday.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great, we will roll into agenda item number two. Noah, do you mind reading that into the record? And we'll invite Kittle Ford to walk us through how we're going to do this.
Agenda item two, clerk file 314425. Remand of the approval granted through clerk file 314356 for a contract rezone application of 70th and Greenwood Ave LLC to rezone an approximately 12,188 square-foot site located at 7009 Greenwood Avenue North from Neighborhood Commercial 2 with a 40-foot height limit to Neighborhood Commercial 2 with a 55-foot height limit and M mandatory housing affordability suffix.
Thank you, Noah. Kittle, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Kittle Freeman, Council Central Staff.
Thank you. Just reminding everyone that this is a quasi-dutual matter. Came through the council last year, and the King County Superior Court remanded to us for some action. And so, Kittle, if you don't mind giving us, maybe just walk us and the public through what's going to happen today, and then I'll let you jump in to kind of bring us up to speed.
Okay, sure. So, today, the committee will hear oral argument and discuss a remand from King County Superior Court of a contract rezone approval that the council granted last August. The remand is on kind of a narrow issue. I'll walk through sort of a chronology of the legislative history here, identify the issue on remand, walk through a couple of draft options that are in the memo I distributed to you all yesterday, and then turn it over to oral argument. And after that, the committee can discuss options and decide what to do next.
Great. And oral argument can, well, we're going to hear five minutes of each side, and it's kind of split in two or three parts.
Five minutes from each side. The appellants will go first. The appellants are represented by Jeffrey Eustace, they're Irene Wall and Bob Morgan. They go first and can reserve up to two minutes of their time for rebuttal testimony. And of course, the applicants will speak second. I think both sides have illustrative exhibits that they want to distribute to you prior to oral argument.
Great. All right, we'll jump in.
So, just to remind the committee and the public about how we got to where we are now. In December of 2016, 70th and Greenwood Ave LLC, which is the applicant for this project, applied for a Massachusetts permit to rezone a site located at 7,009 Greenwood Ave North from NC 240 to NC 255M. The applicant seeks to develop mixed-use building at this site. The site is split-zoned. The area shown in green above and identified with number one is zone Neighborhood Commercial 240, and that's the portion of the site that would be rezoned. The area shown in blue and identified with the numbers two and three are zoned, single-family 5,000. On April 19th, I'm sorry, on April of 2018, the SDCI issued an affirmative rezone recommendation and State Environmental Policy Act decision and design review... and design review decision. The hearing examiner held an open record public hearing in June of 2018 and recommended that the rezon be approved. On June 5th, I'm sorry, and on June, later, later that June, the appellantants filed an appeal with the city clerk of the hearing examiner's recommendation, and the council took up that appeal in June and August. In August, the council affirmed the hearing examiner's decision and conditionally granted the rezon application and passed an ordinance effectuating that approval, which changed the official land use map and also accepted an executed property use and development agreement from the applicants. The appellantants filed a land use petition in King County Superior Court alleging six errors in August of 2018, and the court issued an order on March 5th, and then later amended that order after reconsideration on March 27th. And one thing to note here, that there is also a changed circumstance here, which is passage of MHA. That, of course, occurred earlier in March, and now the commercial corridor here on Greenwood Avenue is zoned NC 255M. So, the second page of the memo identifies the issue on appeal. There were six issues in the land use petition, six errors alleged by the appellantants. Two, five of those six were denied by the King County Superior Court, so five of the, so five of those six claims. And there's one issue that the committee will be deliberating on today and hearing oral argument about. And I'll just quote from the order from King County Superior Court. "The remand is for the committee to consider the contract rezon approval and property use and development agreement to address compliance with SMC 2334009D2, which requires that a gradual transition in height and scale and level of activity between zones shall be provided unless major physical buffers, as described in subsection 2334008E2, are present in the area where the commercial lot," and there's a parcel number, "shares a rear boundary line with the single-family residential lot identified as addressed at 7010 Palatine Avenue North." So, for the benefit of the public who may be watching this, we're really talking about a very limited area, which is the intersection, or not the intersection, but the shared property line, not the, the shared boundary line between one on the right-hand side and three on the left-hand side. So one on the eastern side of the site and three on the western side of the site. So the committee will hear oral argument today.
And the reason, because the site that is identified as two has already been preserved in the, I think in the PUDAs as open space?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Herbold. There, to refresh your memory about limitations in the PUDAs that the council accepted back in August, the PUDAs specified that landscaped open space and the parcel identified as number two above would be preserved in perpetuity, more or less, as part of the project.
And of the six issues that the appellantants identified as errors, you said five, the, five of them, the hearing examiner didn't agree, but for one, they did. Is that, is that issue one?
That is issue number one, yes. So the, the judge in King County Superior Court remanded that lone issue, issue number one, to the council.
So that's, so that is the need for a transition in height and scale between zones? And again, the reason why it's only identified for the area between one and three is because there is a transition between one and two?
That's my understanding. We can, of course, ask the applicant, the appellantants we have here with us today, Patrick Downs, who represented the city as well in the appeal. So there are a couple of options that are essentially draft and conceptual options that are available to you to consider. And these could be modified through committee discussion after you hear oral argument from the applicant and the appellantants. But option number one would essentially extend the protections that apply to option number, to parcel number two above, and that were applied through the property use and development agreement to portions of the site addressed to 7010 Palatine Avenue North, so this identified as number three above. Option two would create a gradual transition between zones by requiring a setback in the project at that transition, so at the, at the boundary between one and three above. And then there is, of course, an option here where the council could reject the rezon if the applicant wouldn't agree to any sort of self-opposed limitations on the project. And option one and option two aren't necessarily mutually exclusive, and there may be other options that the applicant and appellant will identify for us as part of their oral argument. Unless, do you have any questions?
I do not. So I think, colleagues, if it's okay, why don't we proceed with the oral argument? And we will set the timer here. And the appellantants are going first, and so they have the option, as Kittle mentioned, to reserve up to two minutes of their time for after the applicants speak. And so we should determine in advance if they plan to do that now. Are you planning, Mr. Eustace, to reserve any of your time for later?
Yes, sir. One minute.
One minute for later, four minutes now. So Noah will set the timer for four minutes. All right, we have the documents you shared with us. And so when you're ready to begin, you may begin.
Thank you. For the record, Jeffrey Eustace. I represent Irene Wall and Bob Morgan, who are here in the council chambers. You may recall Bob Morgan, he worked on central city staff. Essentially, the crux of the issue is, can the rear yard of a single-family house serve as the major transition between a five-story mixed-use development rising right on the property line? So I draw your attention to the area in question. This is on three. So, shared roof development is here, rises five stories right on this shared zoning boundary line. This is the single-family property, which is referred to as the 7010 Palatine property. The distance from here, the easterly wall, I apologize for the, the wiggly laser pointer, from the easterly wall to the zoning boundary line is roughly 39 feet. There's a deck, a stairway, a walkway, and that reduces it down to, oh, around 25 feet. The applicant proposes a retaining wall in here, which reduces it down even further. And the question is, does that provide a major transition between the shared roof property and the single-family property? Those exist as a matter of code. On the next page of the handout, the first page of the handout has the judge's ruling. The next page has the provisions of code. And you'll see at the bottom that open space is defined as predominantly undeveloped to serve the purposes of providing a park, recreational opportunities, conserving valuable resources, and structuring urban development in form. Now, I understand that the applicant has yet a revised set of plans that the applicant will be presenting. I would note, those plans are now presented for the first time. This committee and the city council reviews the record as it existed and doesn't sit as a fact-finding body to consider new evidence. If the applicant wants to change the proposal, the applicant has to go back to SDCI and present its proposal. The applicant's proposal doesn't cure the problem. What the applicant would, would do is essentially incorporate into the Lot 2, the rear yard from the Lot 3, which is the single-family Palatine property. Now, it's still a rear yard to single-family property. It doesn't disappear because somebody on a piece of paper has drawn green around it. The crux of the issue is, is the city council going to allow a developer to try to get around the requirement for a major transition by buying adjacent single-family property and incorporating the rear yard of that property into the development? And there's nothing in the current code, and there's nothing in the code that was just amended that allows that. The, option one does not comply with code. And if it is adopted by the city council, I will assure you that this matter will be back in Superior Court, because that judge, the judge who heard the action, already expressed his doubts about whether that provided the major transition. At that, my four minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from the applicant. And you will have five minutes. And are, are either of these documents the?
The applicant's is the, this guy.
This big one, got it. So colleagues, if you're ready, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Okay. Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Katie Kendall. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. As a result of the council's rezon action last year, this applicant is ready to construct a project that will provide family-sized units, micro retail, affordable housing, and is ready to contribute funds to affordable housing under MHA. The only question here today is whether the open space on the Lot 3 parcel constitutes a major physical buffer under 34009D2. The answer here is emphatically yes. The court found that the open space in the larger single-family parcel, which is Lot 2 here, is a major physical buffer, in part because it is preserved in perpetuity under the PUDAs. On a number of occasions, the court in its oral ruling stated that the project would be compliant with 009D2 if Lot 3 provides open space that becomes a physical buffer and is also preserved in perpetuity, just like Lot 2 in the development site. And that is what the applicant is proposing that the council would adopt here today. And we ask that the council approve the option one findings. In reviewing the record, Lot 3 was not really discussed at all in terms of compliance with this section. We're before, for you to remedy this gap. First, the open space was always intended to be contiguous, but admittedly, the MUP plans did not do a very good job of demonstrating that. The space should operate and be considered as one open space. As the court recommended, the applicant requests that the council amend the PUDAs to ensure that the open space at both single-family parcels remains in perpetuity. Second, as the court further suggests, the applicant requests the council require changes to the open space area to ensure that it feels nicely landscaped and open and buffers the project. I want to direct you to illustrative exhibit number one. This is actually a redline version of the landscaping plan in the MUP plan set, administrative record 279. What we've done here is illustrate what the plans could look like and the council could require. This doesn't need to go back to SDCI. This is something the council could require as part of its findings. Specifically, some of the elements to remove to make this feel more contiguous would be to remove the deck and the about-two-foot retaining wall, and remove the pathway along the, the side, so it feels more of a contiguous open space and really kind of frames the area so it's much more contiguous. With this revised open space and the fact that the PUDAs can preserve this open space in perpetuity, this really presents an opportunity to preserve this and provide the sufficient buffer in compliance with 009D2. We have a, just a rendering of kind of what that would look like. This is just to kind of give you a sense of what that could feel like. Because of this, we don't believe any additional transitions or setbacks are required, and we ask you to adopt option one findings and reject the option two findings that are before you today. And to be clear, the option two findings require setbacks that are not required by code for this project as it's one development site. So to select this option would not only result in lost units and result in a, really a non-viable project here, it effectively amends the code via the PUDAs to make setbacks not deputable and removes from the process the design review board to determine what could be an appropriate transition here. The end result is that the PUDAs would not be, would be rejected, and the site would not be rezoned, and there would end up being a gap here in the zoning map itself. Turning to appellant's arguments quite quickly, they claim the proposed space is really just a backyard. This is a red herring. First, this is one development site, and no rear yard requirements would even be required here because it's one development site. Two, the proposed open space on Lot 3 is over 60% larger than what would be required in a 15-foot rear yard requirement itself. Finally, if this was an actual backyard, it could be fenced, and there'd be single-family activity as, along with that. Under MHA, this project actually has an opportu, or, sorry, because this isn't under MHA and it's under a PUDAs, this project actually has an opportunity to better transition to the nearby single-family zone and preserve this open space in perpetuity, which would not be something that would, would have happened under the MHA zoning. To summarize in 30 seconds, we would like you to adopt the option one findings as amended, and amend the PUDAs to ensure the open space remains in perpetuity, and require SDCI implement the changes that we discussed today. In the alternative, if the council does not believe the open space is a sufficient physical buffer, we request an alternative option where the council would adopt alternative findings that either require removal of the single-family home or rebuilding and movement of the single-family home to provide even more open space. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. We will now return to the appellant, who will have one minute. Noah, thank you for putting the timer up.
As regards the notion of the rear yard for the 7010 Palatine property being a red herring, it's nothing of the sort. I would assume that members of this PUS probably have lived in single-family houses. There are yard requirements in single-family houses. The rear yard requirement is, what, something like 25 feet? The difficulty with accepting the applicant's argument is that this committee, the PUS, would essentially be setting a precedent that any developer who wants to avoid the requirement for a major transition and avoid the requirement for providing open space would do so by purchasing the adjacent single-family property and doing exactly what they're doing, using the rear yard for another property to satisfy, satisfy the requirements of their development. And that's contrary to code. Thank you.
Thank you. Kittle?
Yes.
Well, why don't I start? Colleagues, we have a couple options that have been highlighted by Kittle and then discussed by both the appellant and the applicant. My intention today would be to proceed to a recommendation to give towards Kittle to draft legislation that would codify essentially what we may or may not agree on. So, but figuring out that first, Kittle, can you help frame up what we do next? We heard from two different lawyers who, not surprisingly, had very different views on what the court said. And I'm curious if, if that's for you to try to help clarify, or if we should invite Patrick to the table, or if that's not really appropriate, to, to just ask some questions about what the judge's statement did or did not say.
Well, I think you can, I mean, there are certain questions. For example, the question about a rear yard and a, and a combined lot development, or not combined lot development, but a development like this where there are multiple properties in different zones, I cannot actually answer off of the top of my head. It is true that single-family houses have a rear yard requirement. I'm not sure how that would be affected by the unified development site here. If you have questions about what the judge directed, I think we could ask Patrick that. It probably would also be fair to ask the appellant's and applicant's attorneys if they agree with Patrick's interpretation of the judge's order.
Okay. I would be interested in that, colleagues, but I, if that's okay with you all. Specifically, there was a, Patrick, do you mind coming to the table? The, the comment that I heard was whether the, whether the judge would allow option one, or has already spoken that option one before us would, I heard the, the appellant say that, my interpretation, that the judge has already said that option one is not what he, what he or she would like to see. I heard the applicant say the opposite. Can you tell us what, what you see in the, the judge's remand, what they said about, and how that might speak to option one and/or option two?
Sure. Patrick Downs with the city, city's law department. I represented the city in this matter in Superior Court. I'm going to give you a summary of what I heard during the judge's oral ruling, and then what was remanded. what was remanded. The judge had no concerns that 3 was part of this site and there was a single-family home as part of this project. That's crystal clear in my mind. What's also crystal clear in my mind is the judge had a primary concern that the backyard of 3 wasn't preserved in perpetuity. And what came through the initial order and then the revised order is to lay it out for you folks and the council as a whole to determine, should you stagger back a portion of a building or preserve the backyard of 3 in perpetuity? That was, that's, that's the takeaway for me.
Great. So I appreciate that, Patrick. That helps. I will respect that different attorneys may have different views on that. And what we heard is, if I understood correctly, was if we choose option-one, this will be back in court, which is somewhat right. If we choose option-two, the project is not feasible moving forward. So anyways, colleagues, I, based on my conversations, I haven't talked to Patrick before, but with Kedel and I think with the advice of Patrick, my understanding is what Patrick said, and my inclination would be to move forward with option-one and essentially preserve in perpetuity the, the open space on Lot 3, similar to what we did in Lot 2, and to achieve what I understand the judge's objective from King County Superior Court is through that mechanism. But I'd be curious to hear what you all think.
Thanks. So one of the things that I heard from the applicant is that if we didn't support option-one, that they would prefer that we order the building in Lot 3 to be removed and then look at that preservation of open space and because then apparently it, by removing the house, the, the issue of there being a rear, a rear lot behind a single-family home doesn't exist anymore. So for me, I, I question whether or not it makes sense going down that road with, if the, if the result's the same, if the result is the same, that you're still preserving that, it, it seems like the, the appellant's argument is, is just based on the fact that there is a structure on Lot 3 and that whether, if there wasn't a structure on, on Lot 3, there would be no problem because there wouldn't be a requirement for a rear lot. And so it, to me, it seems like a distinction without a difference. And I don't know that it would be in our interest to order the removal of the building on, on Lot 3 to just come back with the same outcome, if that makes sense.
Yeah. What I think I hear you saying, I mean, for me, when I look at this, the, to the extent that there's, you know, harm or damage being done by the, the lack of setbacks, if you will, on Lot 1 would be to someone who might live in Lot 3. Now, the people who own Lot 3 and Lot 1, and it's all a single parcel, that to me, and clearly they're not saying that they're being harmed, and whoever may choose to live in a building on Lot 3 would know that that's the condition. It's not like they bought it under one condition and now it's changed, and that's some sort of damage. And to me, to lose the unit of housing seems kind of silly. I imagine there's plenty of people in the city that would love to live there despite a large building being in the backyard because it's better than not living in its structure. And so I hate to lose a unit of housing for that sake, so. Councilmember Gonzalez?
I think it's a pretty straightforward issue. And I am understanding, based on both the arguments and the review of these materials and Patrick's remarks, that really it comes down to two issues based on the remand from the Superior Court. One is that there is a concern that even though the backyard, the yard is, could be sufficient in terms of that buffer and that tapering, there is concern that it could be developed in the future because it's not preserved as open space in perpetuity. I see that as a potential technical error that should have been included in the, in the PUDAs but wasn't. Clearly, to me, indicates that the fact that parcel 2 was in the PUDAs in such a fashion is the precedent that I feel like I need in this case to, to make a decision that option-one is probably the best option in terms of making sure that, that that open space is preserved without the destruction of an existing housing unit.
Kedel?
Yeah, so there are maybe some technical things to keep in mind here. There is, to effectuate the rezone, the council needs to pass a findings, conclusion, and decision document. There are probably some additional findings and conclusions that need to be made here. The draft PUDAs for option-one sets out one potential additional finding, which is that the rear yard of the 7010 Palatin Avenue North is susceptible essentially to the same kind of limitation as the parcel to the south of it. And there's a national conclusion that supports that as well, well, supports the, a notion of a gradual transition between height and scale and the presence of a physical buffer, and that is that the landscaped open space in the rear yard of the single-family lot at 7010 Palatin Avenue North provides a physical open space buffer between land uses and allows for a gradual transition between the height and scale of the neighborhood commercial zone on the east side of the property and the single-family zone on the west side of the property. So essentially, the committee here and the council eventually, assuming that the committee moves to option-one, would be concluding that the, essentially, the 39.4-foot, 39-foot-deep buffer provided on Lot number three meets the directive of the rezone criteria in relation to transitions.
All right. Kedel, a technical question on the, on this document, I believe the applicant submitted today. It discusses removal of a walkway and a deck, and I don't know if that's something that's, one, I guess, is, is this something that's part of the record that, that we should be looking at or not? And if it's, and then I guess my second question is, is that, are those removal of those proposals something that we need to contemplate or was that just something submitted?
So it sort of depends here on what the council ultimately does. But in terms of, you know, this is, we said, what we essentially have here in the illustrative exhibit is argument from the applicant about what they would do to meet the remand directive from King County Superior Court. Mr. Yousa suggested that this would have to go back to SDCI. That's actually not the council's practice. We sometimes make amendments based on council decision-making to contract rezones that have been proposed in front of the council. So what would, what sort of, as a practical matter, what, assuming that the council adopts option, what the committee recommends option-one here, as a practical matter, what would happen would be that I would write a property use and development agreement that rescinds the prior one and includes an additional condition. And some of those conditions would have to do with improving, have to do with adopting and improving the landscape plan for parcel number three. And that would be a directive essentially to SDCI to not issue the mass use permit until the MUP plans were changed to reflect that.
Got it. So colleagues, my suggestion at this moment, I, if I hear folks correctly, would be to vote to approve option-one and give direction to Kedel to proceed as directed, and are folks okay with that? Kedel, help me with what I actually, what motion should I be making to give you that direction?
I think if you would, so if you were to move option-one, I think you can, to move that and provide some direction to me to draft a property use and development agreement and also a revised findings, conclusion, and decision, which the council, which the, which you would substitute at full council when this comes back to full council. If the applicant doesn't agree to the, any changes that the committee recommends, presumably they would not execute a PUDAs, in which case the rezon would not proceed. But if they are willing to do that, then we would need, I would need to draft an ordinance that rescinds the prior rezoned ordinance and also accepts a new PUDAs and changes the official land use map.
Great. And then?
I was just going to say, so moved.
Thank you. I will second.
World's longest motion.
Have we, Kedel, remind me, will the, before this comes to full council, will there be an agreement that the PUDAs accepted or does it come to full council and then those discussions happen about the PUDAs?
So the ordinance accepts the property use and development agreement. And as a matter of practice, the council only accepts property use and development agreements that have been executed by the applicant.
Got it. And so I imagine this would take at least a couple weeks for you to draft it and have the back and forth and see if there's acceptance of it.
Probably something that would be at full council in early May.
Okay, great. So we have a motion in second before us to, to move forward with option-one and give Kedel direction, as Kedel so eloquently stated for the record. Is there any further discussion on this?
One point related to the legislation that we passed earlier. We highlighted the need to have a discussion and some clarity around what a development lot is. I just want to flag that as something I'm still interested in and would love to learn more from SDCI and potentially the law department, if you're working on it, where we're at on that.
Right. I think that tentatively is, is an issue that we'll tee up for the 2019 Land Use Code omnibus bill, which should come to us sometime this summer.
Great, great.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Rule. This is a unique setup, which is one recipe to end up in court. And there's been some comments today about precedent-setting or not, and I think there is some issues that there isn't clarity on, that we, it would be good for us to provide some clarity moving forward. Okay. So all in favor of approving the motion, as described by Kedel, to adopt option-one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unopposed and undiscussed. So Kedel, we will look forward to hearing from you. I will, at the moment at least, continue to be point on this. We likely will have a new chair of the land use committee at some point, but I may just, if it's okay with a new land use chair, retain oversight of this, at least for the purpose of discussion with colleagues, just for continuity's sake. But obviously, we'll bring whoever's new up to speed too and just have that discussion. Patrick, thank you for stepping in, and I think appreciate your work and appreciate your advice here. Great. We're done with that. Noah, do you mind reading in agenda item number three?
Agenda item three?
Sorry, I should just mention to colleagues and the public that this is still a quasi-judicial matter. There's a decision that will come before council based on the comments from the appellant's. It seems likely that this will remain in a quasi-judicial matter for months to come, so just ask folks to continue to honor the doctrine of, I forget what it is.
The appearance of fairness doctrine.
Thank you. That doctrine, until we are told otherwise, and it likely may be sometime, so. Great. Agenda item number three. Sorry, Noah.
Agenda item three, Council Bill 119497, an ordinance related to monitoring and inspecting vacant buildings for compliance with the requirements of the Housing and Building Maintenance Code, amending section 22.900F.010 of the Seattle Municipal Code and amending ordinance 125704 and ordinance 125727 to modify monitoring fees and monitoring program requirements.
Great. So we do a quick round of introductions.
Kedel Freeman, Council Central Staff.
Faith Lumsden with the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections.
Welcome, Faith.
Thank you.
Kedel, I don't know, do you have any opening comments you want to make on this before we just jump into where we are?
This is, in some ways, a piece of planned housekeeping legislation, and I can recite a little bit of the legislative history here and describe what the bill does.
That'd be great.
Okay. So I think you all are pretty familiar with the legislative history, but for the benefit of those folks who may be watching, in, I think it was 2016 or 17, the council amended the Housing and Building Maintenance Code to strengthen standards for maintaining vacant buildings, and that triggered an additional legislative process that culminated in some ways last year during budget, when the council amended the requirements for securing vacant buildings to make certain, to make inspections mandatory in certain conditions. So prior to last November, SDCI had discretion to inspect vacant buildings for compliance with the standards for securing those buildings. In, in last, last November, the council passed ordinance 125727, that amended the vacant building monitoring program to make inspections mandatory for buildings which have received three notices of violation for, for violating the requirements for securing vacant buildings, if they were located on a lot for which a development approval was sought, or if they were included on a list maintained by the Police and Fire Department of buildings that have generated calls for dispatch. And the council also amended the code to sort of establish what the criteria would be for coming off of the inspection list when buildings had been repaired and reoccupied, when they'd been inspected, inspected four consecutive times, so one initial inspection plus three subsequent inspections and been found to have no code violations, or if they had gotten a permit to be demolished from the Seattle Department of Construction Inspections. Another key part of the legislative history here is that the council amended the 2019 proposed budget to add additional position authority to SDCI and appropriation authority to implement this change in program scope. And, and the council also deferred the effective date of, of the regulatory ordinance that the council passed and changes to the fee ordinance to give SDCI time to change administrative practices in anticipation of the changed program. So this bill is, in many ways, kind of a housekeeping bill. The council intended to revisit some of the changes made back in November. It modifies fees for inspections for buildings found to meet the requirements of the code to better reflect the cost to SDCI of making that inspection, so it increases that fee slightly from $171 to $261. It allows for buildings to be enrolled after only one violation, if the violation is not remedied by the compliance date established in the notice of violation, or if the first violation is remedied within the compliance period but a second violation occurs within one year from the date of the first violation. And it also allows buildings to no longer be enrolled in the program when there have been three as opposed to four inspections, consecutive inspections without violations. And there's some other clarifying amendments that were recommended by SDCI that are reflected in the proposed bill. So that is my recap of the legislative history.
Faith, do you want to, anything do you want to add or clarify or elaborate on for us?
I, I think the only thing I would say is, council may recall, we had some concerns about this last fall, and I feel very confident that with these changes and with the work that we've done in the last several months to try to figure out how to restructure our program, that we'll be able to seriously commit to this program and make most of it happen. And the, the one piece I just want to acknowledge for the council is that even with the three new inspectors, and thank you very much for that, this program is designed to pay for those positions. So even with those inspections, as the program first takes off, it does call for a lot, thousands and thousands of monthly inspections. So we're going to have to work our way up to the full inspection routine, and we will get there. It may take us some months to really get to doing all of those inspections monthly.
And my recollection is that's one of the changes we made. It's a change that I have some concerns about because it does give SDCI a lot of flexibility. I believe we removed the requirement for the monitoring inspections to be monthly, and instead, they have, there's a reference to them being sequential.
That's right. Yeah, so it's.
Because you would ask for some flexibility because they may not happen every month. But this is also something that I want to make sure that we're tracking because we can't call it a monitoring program if it's six months between, between inspections. So the, the expectation of a monthly inspection has actually been removed from the legislation, but it's something that we have to track very carefully.
We are considering it still a monthly inspection program, and that's our goal so far as we look at how will we implement it. We, we really want to do the monthly inspections and begin to see whether we're finding lots of those vacant buildings will fall off the monthly monitoring list, and then we'll pick up new ones each month, starting probably first with the new ones that are coming into the development process. We'll also be managing complaints, and last year, again, complaints continue to go up. Perhaps this year, they'll go down with more active monitoring, so we'll, we'll find out. And we are planning to be able to report back to you early in 2020 with our experiences. How many inspections are we able to complete? What's the record for people paying their monitoring fees and so on?
And one other point I want to make for the viewing public, whereas it might read as if a change in the ordinance for an enrollment trigger going from as if a change in the ordinance for an enrollment trigger going from what was previously said, three violations to one violation, that might look like a big change, but that was a change that was made because you, Faith, clarified what your business practices were, which is that if you went back after a previous violation, there would not be another violation issued. The case is just merely left open. And so, we do require in the ordinance that either there's not compliance with the first violation or if there is compliance after the first violation and you keep the case open, you return two times within one year of the date of the violation.
Right. So, you're correct. We, to save what is still unfortunately a good deal of paperwork with reissuing notices of violation, typically, we'll issue one and if we need to keep that open and work under that one, we do plan to be back, we hope, monthly, but at least within, you know, maybe a 60-day turnaround time for some of those follow-up inspections.
So, just to make sure I understand, Faith, there's a body of work out there that will need to come under this if we pass this. And so, and the hope would be that through the work we do, that a bunch of those properties will come off the list because they will be compliant. And then going forward, as we have the normal development flow, it'll probably be, hopefully be easier with the existing folks to get through that work on a regular basis. But this, you know, the big wave of stuff that's going to come through, you're just asking for some flexibility and recognition that we'd be a little patient there.
Exactly.
And when you say thousands and thousands of inspections, that would imply to me that there are over 1,000 vacant buildings to be monitored right now?
Well, we know that we have over 1,000 demolition permits. Not all the demolition permit structures are vacant today, but they're going to be vacant before that demolition happens. And we know that most of the problem vacant buildings tend to be vacant buildings that are in the development process. So, there are, if we're doing monthly inspections on those, plus another maybe 400 inspections a year from complaints with monthly inspections, that is thousands of inspections as we move forward.
Can I just make one more addition as it relates specifically to the question that you raised? There is, and I just want to highlight this because I think it's, one of our objectives of this ordinance is to reduce the number of buildings that are habitable in the development process and vacant. We want to incentivize developers to keep those buildings occupied. And so, there is language in the ordinance that we previously passed that allows for an exemption for the monitoring program if the developer participates with an organization that places a caretaker in the residence. We've heard from an organization called Weld that works with folks who have recently been released from the criminal justice system. And that is one such program that is functioning and has relationships with over a dozen developers in town and is working on doing that. So, that hopefully will provide some more of an incentive.
We hope so.
And Faith, I appreciate your ongoing work on this, Councilmember Herbold, and organizations like Weld, Weld in particular, really seems to be doing some amazing work. And it seems to me like this is a win-win-win. I can appreciate how a developer who is trying to achieve kind of timing certainty in a world where their permits are, take a long time and they don't know when they're going to get, but as soon as they get it, they likely would want to begin construction. And the process of, you know, removing tenants from a property can be time-consuming. But my understanding is, once the kind of long-term tenants have been removed, we provide flexibility on a short term by working with Weld or other mechanisms to have tenants in there temporarily that could be moved with, you know, they move in with the understanding that at some point with very short notice, this will go away. And I'm curious, are we seeing more and more developers opt into that or do they not really understand that? Or is it just not part of their business plan or...
You know, I don't know that I can really answer that. I do think more and more developers are in touch with Weld. I know Weld has made a lot of direct contact with the development community. I know Mary's Place has done it, but they tend to work on the larger commercial projects and put lots of people into structures. So, we at S T C I have a monthly meeting with the Master Builders Group, so I'll be speaking with them in May about the startup of this vacant building monitoring program in June and will be trying to highlight some of the options that they have. It is a longstanding practice that for a developer who's gone through or started the tenant relocation process, that as long as they are taking care of their existing tenants, if some of those people move out, new tenants can move in and be informed that they may have to move out as soon as the permits are issued. So, that's a longstanding practice, but it is true, developers really aren't landlords and until there's something that really gets their attention, and a monthly monitoring fee may get their attention, we don't see a lot of people doing that on the small projects.
Do you have a brochure?
We do. We do.
They have a brochure promoting both the exemption as well as Weld. And I know that their, Weld themselves, are doing a lot with master builders to develop relationships.
Yeah. And our brochure is pretty high-level because we want to know the circumstances before we say you can absolutely do this, but it says, you know, talk to us. Do you want to work within relocation? Do you want to work with a nonprofit? What's a caretaker? That kind of stuff.
Well, I hope that, I appreciate the outreach work you're doing and continuing to do. And I appreciate Weld as an advocate. I know that they've, I know they go out and talk to the master builders and other to make sure they're aware of the program. And so, I think anything we can do to uplift that and really create a, I don't know, an incentive structure to direct folks to that. Obviously, if a building is uninhabitable, then however we can streamline, you know, demolition just to remove that kind of hazard is great. But so many buildings are habitable and there's so many people in our community who really could use some housing even for, you know, a few months as a transition. And so, while I know the developers are not landlords, they're probably also not putting up plywood on a regular basis. They're not, I mean, there's just this interim period and like, the alternative, I know, can be a real hassle to them and incur significant costs. And so, hopefully, we'll see more and more of them choosing this program and continue to support Weld or other organizations. All right. Any further discussion on this? I appreciate the work to amend it or to bring back these changes to it. Now, I'm just trying to find my schedule so I can move it. I will go ahead and move Council Bill 119497.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Great. Thanks for your work on this and this should be at full council on Monday. Colleagues, thank you so much for doing this. So much fun to be chair of the land use committee.
Seems like a whole time.
I want to give like a farewell speech. This is my last time.
Your first and your last.
You were a land use chair.
I was land use chair, so, for a couple of years. Anyways, Noah, thanks for staffing this and we will be adjourned.